On behalf of the board, I want to welcome everyone here tonight. And to open the meeting, Mr. Latimore, will you take a roll call attendance, please?
Trustee Talkees. Trustee Bernard.
Here.
Trustee Southwick.
Here.
Trustee Arnold. Mayor LaBounty.
Here. Thank you. In the packet, there's nobody, by the way, addressing the public that wants to address the board, so we don't have to read any rules for addressing the board. The second item would be minutes of the regular July 3, 2023, regular meeting. The trustees should have that minutes in this package. If there's no changes or amendments or questions on those minutes, I make a motion that we accept those minutes as printed. I just need a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes of July 3, 2023, as printed, say aye.
Aye.
All those against it, say no. The ayes have it. Bills, Mrs. Talkees?
There is a supplemental list of bills that I have passed out today. Did you receive that? Okay. So those are the four, there's four additions.
Make a motion, we pay the bills with the supplemental included?
I second that motion. All those in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Correspondents, Mr. Latimore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the only correspondence that I have is I received communication from the Dodge Memorial Library, Ann, and Ann approached me as far as for possible expansion of the library for a community room. And we felt that it would be best to have Ann make the presentation because her and her board have been involved with this since when.
Well, early spring.
Early spring. So at this time, with the mayor's consent, I'd like to turn the floor over to Ann for her presentation.
Floor's yours, Ann.
Thank you very much. I'm here, I'm Ann Paulson, by the way, in case anybody doesn't know me. I'm the director of the Dodge Memorial Library. And I'm here on behalf of my library board, of trustees, to talk about a possible expansion to the library. The library was built, was chartered in 1907, opened in 1907, and since that time, the building itself has never been expanded in much of any way. And one of the, because we are a chartered library, chartered by the state of New York, we have minimum standards, and in the little packet I gave you is a list of the standards that all New York State public libraries must meet to remain a chartered library in the state of New York. And I just want to refer to number eight and number nine. Number eight is maintains a facility that addresses community needs as outlined in the library's long-range plan of service, including adequate space, lighting, shelving, seating, power, and data infrastructure, and a public restroom. And the next one is provides programming to address community needs as outlined in the library's long-range plan of service. We do have a long-range plan of service that gets submitted to the state of New York, to the education department, which covers all of public library services in the state of New York. It's really become clear over the last couple of years. I started in August 2020, in the middle of COVID, and as we've come out of that time, the libraries become more and more, it's become busier, and there's more opportunities for us to do programming. But it's very difficult, given our building, because we don't have enough space to really do the programming that would meet the needs of the community. And one of those things is to have a community room. Almost all the libraries in the area, Moors, Champlain, the only one that doesn't really is West Shaysie, but Shaysie, Champlain, and Moors, they all have community rooms where they can hold programming and events. And the next piece of paper was just a list of some of the things that we could do if we had a community room. And I also want to add the fact that I'm hoping that if such an expansion happens to a community room, that there will be space also for a dedicated children's section, a children's room. So in this list, I have, I won't go through the whole thing, but these are the things that we could potentially do with a community room that we really cannot do now. If, I don't know if all the trustees have been to the library to look at it, and if you want some time to come and take a tour of the library, that would be wonderful. But we can't do a lot of these things. Most of these things are not possible because we don't have room. We don't have a community space. We also, our children's section is right in the main area of the library, so anytime we have a children's event, like our summer reading program that's going on right now, it's in the main part of the library, and it's hard for anything else to be going on besides that event, when the children and families and grownups are right in the main part of the library. And that's the case of a lot of activities that happen in the library right now. We do have a small meeting room, it's the Ross Nonfiction Room, which seats, it has a table with six chairs. There's two comfortable chairs in the tiny corners, but that's really the only meeting space we have. So, there's a list here of what we could potentially do with a meeting room, and also, hopefully, a dedicated children's room. But priority number one is a meeting room. Now, back in the fall, I went to the New York Library Association meeting, conference, I should say, and I met Paul Mays, who's an architect, the next slip, the next sheet here, from Butler Rowland Mays Architects, and they're located in Boston Spa. And this is just a list of all the libraries that his firm has worked on, either done major construction or small construction. They're very familiar with libraries, they're extremely respectful of historic libraries, particularly. And the reason I put the little picture of Kinderhook is, he came to visit our, my board, and did a wonderful presentation, and he kept referring to the Kinderhook Library in Kinderhook, New York, as an example of how a library could be expanded without colonizing the integrity of the historic building itself. So I just put a list of all the libraries that they've worked on, they specialize in libraries. Paul Mays is on the board of several libraries, he's worked with libraries for over 20 years. One of the libraries that I'm most familiar with is Serenac Glickrey Library, which when I first moved to the area, it was in the process of being renovated, and it was his firm that did the renovation, and it was very well done. So I just added a couple more pictures of potential, this is all very preliminary. It's just when he presented to us, he gave us some photographs to just show us the possibilities. And one of the pictures on the back of one of the sheets is a picture of a community room, and what that might, might look like. It's just a sample, but it can give you an idea of what a community room might look like. This kind of room would be available to the community, as I say, not only for library programs, but for other community organizations to use. The next picture on the other, I don't know which side, the other side, there's a picture of the Cambridge Public Library, which is where my children grew up, and the little extension off to the right of the library was done by Paul Mays's firm. And you can see, they keep the integrity of the historic building and then add on to it. Underneath is a very, very simple preliminary idea of what might be done with the Dodge Memorial Library. I don't know, it's not terribly clear in this picture. The community room and hopefully a children's room is the bottom part of the picture. What his, he was suggesting to have some kind of a breezeway between the historic part of the building and a new addition, a community room and hopefully a children's room. So I wanted to put that in. It's, again, very preliminary, but it gives an idea of the possibilities for the library. He did present us with a proposal, which is the next, the last bit of the packet. This was the proposal that he wrote for our library. And I think it's a very comprehensive, very fair proposal. Page five is the fee structure, which is what I'm here to ask your support for. We hopefully, in the, this is really step one of a long process to eventually request a construction grant from the state of New York, a library construction grant. But you can't do a grant proposal until you have an architectural design, because that's what construction is based on. So that's why we're so, we really want to bring this to your attention and make it clear how happy we are with Paul Mays's firm as being the architect to design this extension to the Dodge Memorial Library. I'm hoping that, trying to figure out how to best phrase this, we are requesting the potential of using some of the library reserve fund to pay for the architectural design of this, of the library expansion. As I said, this is only step one, but we need an architectural design before we go to the next step, if we go to the next step of going, you know, trying to find a construction company, a construction company, to create an estimate, because the state of New York construction grant is based on an estimate from a construction company. You're not, you're not required to use that particular construction company, but you need a construction estimate in order to apply for a library construction grant. So, are there any questions at this point? Yes, lots of questions.
I've got a couple. Have you ever approached any board about this project before? I mean, this is the first time hearing that the library wanted a community room or needed a community room?
Actually, if I went back into the historical, the newspaper articles from the New York State Historic Library, Historic Database, where you can go back to see articles from newspapers, way back, and in 19, one of the, I don't remember, 1999, something like that?
1992.
92? There was a proposal presented, I, I'm not sure whether it actually went to the live, to the village board?
I don't know. It was back when Mrs. Trumley was the librarian, and it was her son, there was an article in the Press Republican written by Steve Manor regarding the proposal.
And apparently, it didn't get any traction or anything?
I don't know. I have no idea.
Okay, this is all, this is all, but since, how long have you been a librarian up here in Ross Point?
I, well, I started in 2020, August of 2020, so three years. I've been a librarian, I was a school librarian for 20 years.
I guess you, how long ago did you make this proposal to the board, that you wanted this expansion?
Well, I've realized this as time has gone on, because there's so many things that we can't do, because we don't have any space for it.
I understand that, but the question is, did you mention this to the board a year ago, six months ago, or yes?
Six months ago.
Yeah, well, we started the conversation over a year ago.
Yes, I would say over a year, though.
And the only concern I have, and I want you to take it in the same light it's said, is if this was something that's needed, and you're coming to the board, why didn't you come to me as the mayor, the administrator, with some of the board members, and sit down with myself and discuss this, and the possibilities, and what was needed, and we, you know, I'm, with all due respect, you're just giving me this today and tonight, and I'm going to need some time to read it, digest it, and before I can give you any kind of an answer from myself or this board, I, I can hear just the initial conversation that you've given us, that the need is there, and what the purpose of this room would be, but I just need some time to digest this information from the engineering. How big of a room are you talking about, by the way?
My questions, do you have conventions or?
No, because this is a very preliminary plan. That would come from, you know, if we actually go with this proposal.
But what I'm saying to you, do you have an idea that you want to have a room that can hold 20 people, 30 people, 40 people, I mean, has that been discussed?
I don't really.
Well, we did tell our staff.
I would say fifty.
The same one.
I would say at least 50 people.
Okay. And, and did they have any preliminary discussions about a size, or the whole 50 room, the whole 50 people, the size of a room would be, did they have any?
No, we have not gotten that far because we don't have any plans, and we have not met with him. He drew a brief thing, but not a...
That's the next step.
Yes.
Right. So if we, if we do, that's the next step.
Personally, I don't think it was a, I don't think it's a good design.
No, that's not the final design.
You're going to have two things on the side and one in the back?
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no.
Ignore, I'm sorry, that wasn't here.
I know, but it's not.
It's a very, very, very rough idea. Ignore the two things on the sides. Where we go?
I mean, if you're going to expand, that would go...
There's no design, there's none. These are just ideas from other libraries that have been done.
What it's really, this is the part.
But there's no design from the part.
Extending to the south of the building, because there isn't, you know, this is the parking lot here, but this is the part.
Right.
Ignore this, those were just other, other ideas.
Some of the ideas involve not just expanding, but also reconfiguring the space, so that the person at the desk of the library sort of has an overview, as opposed to a little room over there and a little room over there, which can be switched around to make things more efficient.
Open, accessible.
Exactly, yes.
More efficient for the person running the library.
Also safety issues, so you're, it's more visible.
It's going to be modernized, it is not, it's not convenient right now, it's just meshed, and it's going to get...
No, I understand it's all preliminary, and we're in here, I just wanted, just for my own sense, to understand how, where it was going, the south side of the building, I understand that, how big the room was, and so on and so forth.
We're going from 1920 to 2023.
What's that now?
We're going from 1907 to 2023.
And I understand, I don't, I know that this is at this time.
We're not, we're not saying no, we're just, we want more, more images, more.
I look you on the visual thing, because I have trouble picturing things with...
And, and I want everybody on the board to understand, I'm not saying no to this, or I'm against it, I'm just saying that this is initial information, and I can't make an informed, intelligent decision without more information, you know what I mean? I mean, this, hey, I'm all for this community, I've lived here all my life, I want the kids and the adults and everything, to have everything, access to everything we can provide them. But at the end of the day, how we provide them and with the cost that we provide, this, I need to know, and what we're all...
I think also the architectural plan would include that. Here's how much it would cost you to make this much space, here's how much it would cost you to make this much space, and what are the various steps? Because the guy was clear with us that if you go ahead with a renovation, you don't have to do everything at once, you might just do this much, and then somewhere down the road, get another grant to do this much more. So his idea is you do an initial plan, and then adapt it as you go.
Because it's experience, when an old library, when a library's never been renovated before, and it's the first time it happens, usually they have a first phase, and then you see the reaction and the effect on the community, and in most cases, they go into a second phase and sometime a third phase, because it...
Of the activities and the increased activities.
Exactly, yes.
You know, I mean, if this room is being utilized, and then we can expand it again, so it can further be, I understand that.
Yeah, so first you start smaller. Also, the first thing he did when he came, he checked the lower, the basements, if you could do something with this, and then the zonatic, that's extremely big and high, but he, according to him, the cost, and the basement is just too low for, for the lead, legally, you can't do it.
Basically not handicap accessible.
It's not usable.
Correct, correct.
So that's why, then so we determined that it would need the extent, then we can use either up or down, so then it would go out. And size-wise for the rooms, he has an idea, because he is very experienced, his firm is very experienced in doing this, so he would give us an idea, you know, like, don't go too big, don't go too small, kind of gave us an impression, but I don't remember him giving us an exact number of why he'd be going, you know? But I was only there during, during, when the architect was there, so they might have had other discussion.
He did an extensive presentation, he showed slide after slide of all the community libraries that have had things done to them to achieve this. Some of them are like over there in terms of marvelous, but probably unattainable, and some of them are down here, as do a small community like ourselves, who did a modest expansion of their library.
Okay. So we're not, basically, the money to do this, we're still going to have to come up with the construction costs?
Oh, yeah. And you can't get the grant until you do the plan.
Right.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, I mean, this is step one, but even if we never went, I mean, hopefully we do go further, but this is just, this has to be done before you even attempt to go for construction.
I understand that, you have to have an engineering, architectural drawing before they'll even go, right?
And I understand that you haven't heard all of this before, I didn't expect, you know...
All bells and whistles, you say, oh, yeah, go ahead, do it.
No, 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 yeah, I absolutely understand that. The reason it took this long, I think, is I needed the board of my library, not my library, their library, the library board of trustees, to get on board and agree altogether too.
Correction, the village's library.
Right.
Well...
Nobody in here, including myself, holds out, it's the village residence, so...
Exactly.
There you go.
But, you know...
They control the destiny of that library.
We need to, we need it as board to understand very clearly, what are the options here? Is this even feasible? Has it been done before? And then think very deeply about, will we even think about spending that money to get planned? This, this was not something we decided in five minutes either.
No, no.
No, I, I didn't, there's a fine line between some of these bite dream and reality, and that's what I'm trying to figure out, where we at here, whether this is reality, and this is something that down the road that we can really obtain, and it's going to be beneficial to our community, and if it is, I'm all for it, but I just need a little bit more, I guess, information, to say the least, and then, but like I said, I don't want anybody to construe that anything that's being said today is anything negative, it's just a lack of information before we go forward and make any, any promises on this board's behalf. And I appreciate your presentation and coming forward, but, and the reserve fund you were indicating, Mr. Letourneau, our treasurer's not here today, and I would normally ask him, have you had the opportunity or the necessity to use any money in the reserves in the last six months, a year, or a year and a half? Do you use that for any particular reason, this money?
Well, I've been told that, that that fund is used to balance the library's budget at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
That's all I know.
I guess I'll have to do some homework on that also.
Yes, because we don't know.
Okay. I just didn't want to zero out the account and have a problem.
It won't zero out the account.
It will not zero out.
Not according to the numbers that we're looking at.
So the good news is there's like so much funding out there, we just need to get
The initial, the engineering?
Right, and it's going to pay off.
The other thing is that Paul Mays, I've had several conversations with him, and if you read through this, you'll see that it says the proposal is valid through a month from the date of the proposal. Of course, that's not the case. And I contacted him, and he said, nope, that's fine, he understands libraries, he understands, you know, village libraries, he knows that these things take a long time. I just talked to him last week, and, because I said, you know, it's been a while, and these, these fees here, are they, are they going up? You know, we waited, I mean, this has taken longer than we had hoped, and he assured me that these fees will remain the same, as long as it's not too much longer. If we can contact him in some way and agree to this by the fall, sometime in the fall, that these prices will remain the same, which I feel is very gracious, and they certainly seem reasonable to me. But he's, I just want to assure you that he's very familiar with libraries, and, you know...
And I guess I'll ask a dumb question. You're here today for, to inform us of this, and you expect us to...
I guess to inform you of it, and we'll be glad to meet with you, however, whatever the procedure is next.
Okay, no, I, obviously, I, I hear your deadline of the fall, and the price is increasing and all that, and I think it's something that we should meet sooner than later on. I'm going to have, take a look at this, some of our trustees are out sick, as you can see, and we don't have a full board, but I would talk to these people when they get back, and we'll set up a meeting with you, and maybe one of the, one or two of the board members, or all the board members, and we'll go from there. I'll make myself, we have a new mayor's office with a nice meeting table in it, so we can, we can all sit around and...
I haven't seen it yet.
Your own expansion, how do you feel about it?
Well, I'm not, I'm, young lady, I'm not disputing it, just, just like this room, I want to do an upgrade of this room, I want to take us out from the 50s and 60s, bring us up to 2023, but this is here.
Yes, we always heard that.
But we have some good news coming on the horizon, I've met with a couple of our elected representatives, and I think we're going to be able to accomplish some of those things. But at the end of the day, Rome wasn't built in a day, so we're working on that, and I understand your need, I appreciate your presentation, and I assure you that we will meet again in the future with you, me, and the administrator, and probably the treasurer, and whoever you want to bring with you, and we'll discuss this much further, I can assure you, and we'll try to get it done as quickly as we can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and trust me, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody on the board like to say anything before I go on to something else? No?
I just want to say one quick comment, I appreciate, I think you've gone through your own expansion, so it's really nice to think of us too, and we're looking at it for the kids, and attract a bigger community, more children coming in, Ann's been absolutely amazing.
Can I tell you something, some of these things should have been done 20, 30 years ago. But Mayor LaBounty's inherited a few things, and we're trying to expand a few things, but as you all know, everything costs money, and we're trying to work in that direction, and I think what you have here is a damn good idea, as far as for older adults and the children and everything else. But we just have to make sure that it's cost-effective, that we can afford it going forward, and make it something we can be proud of, and that's what I want to have done. And if we just jump on it without thinking, it's not going to work well, I don't think so. But I promise, I will meet with you people whenever you want, okay?
Thank you.
Under reports, I need a, the under resolution 23, 2023-16, a budget transfer. This is from the Water Department Funds, Torres, I think it's, and Mr. Latimore, you can correct me if I'm wrong, this is money to be, for the proposed new water project, is that correct?
Water plan with construction plan.
That is correct, so we're just going to be transferring money that exists in that exists in one account to another account for the new water plant. That is correct?
Correct.
Any questions on that? If not, then I make a motion that we pass, that the resolution twenty-three sixteen, to transfer the money. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor of, oh, the resolution, we'll take a roll call. Vote.
Trustee Pelkey? Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold? Mayor LaBounty?
Aye. The ayes have it, the resolution is as passed, as written. I also had a couple items under my name also to amend, code fifty-four dash four. But we've mentioned a couple of board members, plus our attorney, so I tabled that. We also were scheduled for an executive session. And that involves some personnel issues without the attorney and our full board. I tabled that. I, I want to announce to the public that we're gonna go out to bid on a new roof for our fire department. The fire department is a very important part of our community. This, this, we have, Ms. Cat here tonight. She's been a member of the fire department for a while, my understanding. I'm not a fireman. This has been leaking for quite a while, I would say. A number of years?
It's in the men's washroom, which is in somewhere I go very often. But I understand that there's a significant leak. The EMT is there on the weekend, has a shower and uses that because she's there like for X many hours, quite a long time. All of her belongings got soaked because it leaked.
And then we're talking about the additional damage, the water leaking in between the sub roofs and everything else. So this has been long overdue. I've talked to the administrator and the treasurer and the board. It's very important that we get this done. And so we're gonna go out and get three bids, and we're gonna get this done before the year's over. The other thing is, very briefly, we had a meeting with the EMS people.
We need, we need a motion and a second, so I can advertise it.
And make a motion that we advertise for the new roof for the fire department?
Excuse me, you're right. I second that motion. And we'll take a roll call, vote on that, Mr. Lachemore.
Trustee Pelkey? Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold? Mayor LaBounty?
Aye. So we've been approved to go out for the bid for the roof of the fire department. And the last thing I have is, we had a brief meeting with EMS people last week, and the cost for the EMS service for the village of Ross Point is going to increase by twenty-five thousand dollars. Unfortunately, the cost of fuel, the cost of equipment, and the cost of doing business, they've hired some additional people. And I'm not very happy about it, but at the end of the day, we need this service for our loved ones. And that would be remiss upon anyone on this board to not give us the best service we can for this village, for our sons, our daughters, our friends, our relatives, our mothers and fathers. We need the best service that we can get. And, and if this is the cost of doing business, then that's what it is. But we'll discuss it further, but I wanted you to give the initial information that we received in the meeting with some people from the EMS board. And Corey Thompson, who's, who runs the EMS service, indicated that this fee would be set in stone, a twenty-five thousand dollar increase for two thousand twenty-four. So I wanted to get that out as soon as I could to the residents of the village. And I'll have further information as time goes on. Thank you. That's all I have. Trustee Arnold's not here. Trustee Menard, do you have anything?
Nothing for the team.
Trustee Southwick, do you have anything?
I have a couple things. There was a, there was a notice about boil water that was issued and lifted this past week. That was because there was a water main break right up front of, right by Sandy's Deli. And speaking with Supervisor Menard, it was at an odd angle, so it was a little difficult to work with. But our work crews are great. And working from seven-thirty PM till four AM, and with an assist from Champlain, they got it, they got it fixed. So kudos to them. Our work crews work in sub-zero temperature for, in the winter, they'll work in the hot heat that we had last week. So they, we definitely count on them, and we absolutely need it. So definitely good kudos to them. We also still are looking for a water plant operator. I believe they can contact the village office for details, Mr. Lachemore?
Correct.
Correct. And that's all I have.
Do you need a motion to advertise for that?
I would like to get a motion to advertise that, that position.
I'll make that motion, I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor of advertising for a water plant operator, say aye.